Okay, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, June 15th, 2017 edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I begin this evening, is anyone recording the meeting this evening? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, and we have two parties this evening. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so our first hearing this evening is 7:00 PM applicant, and I do apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your name. Kathryn McAvoy Donzic requesting a special permit on the section 9.3.12.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow for an existing accessory apartment on property located at 23 Franklin Street, Auburn, Mass., map 5, parcel 135, as the applicant present. Could you approach the lectern please ma'am, introduce yourself and give us an overview of what you're trying to accomplish this evening?
First, I'll say the only people who say "Donzic right" are people from Auburn, so that's my husband's one of six, so he here in Auburn. So, yes, we have this existing-in-law apartment in the basement of our home, and we were in the process of refinancing our mortgage, and the bank said, "No, you have to have a permit for this." So here we are.
Okay. Is this a continuation or the first time you've come before us?
Oh, no, this is first time.
Okay, just making sure. Can I just ask before we begin, Caleb, are you aware of this property being inspected yet?
Yeah, the local inspector inspected it, I believe, on Tuesday. This is minimum work, they're gonna add some separation to the ceiling in the basement, but I believe that's already in process.
Okay.
I would have no issue if the board chose to approve it with conditions upon the building code.
Okay, great, thank you. Do you have anything you want to add before I open it up to members of the board?
No, I just say that for the small amount of work that we needed, we just pulled the permit today, so we're everything's moving.
Okay. Mr. Chacolo, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, in general, my question will first go to Caleb. Caleb, was this ever permitted?
There's no records of permits on file.
No records of permit file. How long has this downstairs apartment been in existence?
We bought the house in 2002, prior to that, I can't tell you. It was there when we bought it.
It was there when you bought?
Mm-hmm.
There was no tenant there? And your intention is to keep it and...
To refinance my mortgage.
Pardon?
My intention is to refinance the mortgage.
Okay, and after that's done, and after this is permitted, if it be, so what will be your intention with this downstairs apartment?
I don't think we're intending to really do anything with it.
In other words, are you intending to rent it?
It's not the plan right now, but, okay, my dad's a code inspector, he's like, "Yes, you're gonna..." Just to say yes, in case that's the path we decide to go.
If there is that intent or the possibility?
I would say possibility.
And I'm sorry, Caleb, I did not hear what you said. You said the local inspector went over there?
Yeah, Rick Travers went over and inspected, he's fine with the means of egress, and the only issue he had was the separation of the two units doesn't meet the current building code, so they're gonna upgrade that.
That separation of the two...
Mainly, they're gonna put some sheetrock on the ceiling, it had just the cardboard tiles, so there's no fire separation between the two units currently, but they're upgrading that.
Okay. My concern, it would be a future potential concern, that you have an unfinished basement area. You've come in just under the square footage that we pretty much allow, and I would want to make it sure that that unfinished basement area did not get finished and be included in the apartment. That's all I have for right now.
That's...however, you know, that is absolutely fine.
Okay? You comfortable with that so far?
That's it, so far.
Thanks, Chairman. Caleb, back to you for a second. So you didn't see the property?
I myself didn't know.
So when our inspector went in, did he make any indication of what's in that unfinished space?
No, it's regular basement space storage. I don't know which apartment has access to it, whether it's upstairs or downstairs.
Okay, thank you, thank you for being here. So, and just a couple of follow-up questions on the unfinished space, because a bylaws call for 700 or less based on accessory apartment. Describe it to me.
Oh, it's raw space, I mean, it's where our dryer is, it's where the furnace is, it's where our shelving is. In the winter, it's where the pool pump is.
Is it walled, is it plugged, is it heated?
That, it's...my dad would say that, when he answered that, I don't...
Okay, if you have something to contribute, sorry, excuse me, if you have something to contribute, if you could go up to the lectern.
Can you come up here? I honestly don't know the answer. He would know.
I was gonna mention that Kate has floor plans.
And the folks at home want to hear you, so if you could go to the microphone?
There we go. Kate has floor plans with her, if you'd like to see them.
What I was interested in is the physical space right now, in that unfinished space. Are there walls, is it heated, is it insulated?
It is finished now, the...
It's finished?
Well, it's not finished, no, it's the outside wall, the brick wall, the basement wall.
Okay. So describe, if you would, sir, describe, and I'm not trying to trip you up, but describe to me what you mean by "finished."
The accessory apartment all has, you know, walls, outlets...
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, yeah, no, I'm not holding it up.
I'm just looking for the unfinished space.
Oh, the rest of the basement is unfinished and looks like a basement.
Concrete floor, concrete walls, shelves, boiler, you know...
Tools.
Tools.
Unfinished.
Unfinished.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No, you're fine. Yeah, it wasn't meant to be a trick question, but thank you. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything further to discuss.
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand the question.
I have nothing to apologize for.
Okay. I also don't like the camera.
Okay, so just for clarity also, Mr. Cussy was not able to join us this evening, so we have Karen Blaze, Ms. Blaze is our alternate member, and she will be moving up to full voting member for both hearings this evening. So, Ms. Blaze, you have anything, you have questions that you want to add?
No, I don't, it's, it's fine, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roach?
Nope.
Okay, I mean, for the most part, I think that most of my questions are already answered. Do I have a motion on the application for the 7:00 hearing? Well, excuse me, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so do I have any further discussion, or do I have a motion on the floor for the 7:00 hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. I would have one, and I would agree with Mr. Chacolo, I would have one condition, if it's so appropriate, that we condition the unfinished space to remain as such.
Fine with me?
Through the chair, if I may, my recommendation would just be to attach the usual conditions, standard conditions, this is a special permit, should cover everything.
So we have a list of standard conditions that we have when it comes to accessory apartments. We're gonna attach, then this standard we do with everyone, and then also, we're gonna add that one condition that is completed, all the permits necessary are completed and signed off on before the actual living condition permit will be issued by the building department.
Yep.
So that's one of the things that we'll do.
Okay, so based on discussion, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to just include the standard conditions for accessory apartments, to make the motion.
Okay, standard conditions.
Standard areas to be kept clear.
And completion of...
Standard condition of egress needed.
Right?
Okay, remain...
That's a good point.
I asked you to expand it.
Outlined, issued permits.
As you're taking notes, if I may, Caleb, so the standard conditions for accessory apartments, does that address square footage, or just meeting the applicable bylaws?
Approving the accessory apartment says that it meets the square footage, it's one of the standards of the accessory apartment bylaw, so it's written right in the bylaw, it has to be 700 square feet or less.
I don't read that, I mean, not to be contentious, but I don't read that to be restrictive on the unfinished space, though. I mean, if we approve based on the current space being approved under the 690, that doesn't restrict them from developing that unfinished space.
So, would you like me to have an additional condition?
I would be more...
Finished portion of the basement must remain as such?
I would be more comfortable with that.
Other members of the board, any input on that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so we're gonna add that, that it's...
Mission.
That it remain unfinished. And the outside access to egress remain totally free and clear.
Do we need to sign it?
That's their only means of egress.
Okay, second. Okay, so I've actually just kind of combined those two issues. So what I wrote here was, special condition would be, the unfinished portion of the basement must remain as such, and the means of egress in that area must remain clear at all times. Is that agreeable?
I'd be very comfortable with that, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Maron to approve. A second from Ms. Roach. Mr. Chacolo, how do you vote? Do you want to?
Affirmative.
Yes, okay. Ms. Blaze, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes, and I vote Mr. Tatro for the record as a yes. So congratulations.
Thank you.
So you can reach out to Caleb, you'll have the list of conditions with a special condition attached to that.
Yep.
And once your permit requirements are successfully completed, final inspection should be all set. So I do want to say on behalf of the board, you know, good luck, but I also appreciate you coming forward and getting this apartment on the books. It's something that we've been striving for the last few years on the board, have people come forward with these apartments that aren't known about, we're trying to work with everyone, so I do appreciate that effort, so...
He's a building inspector, he's just a retired building inspector, so I have zero wiggle room in my life, so...
Keep it that way, thank you very much for your time.
Yes, I was, oh, great, thank you. I was nervous when he and Rick were talking, personally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
By the way, this is very...
do have to wait about another two minutes before we can start, and then we'll be right They've done a very nice job, haven't they?
Yes.
with you. Okay, so...
That's why you start like that.
New clockwork is a little early.
I don't like the way I'm doing it.
We have about five minutes to shuffle our paperwork, and we can actually start the
I still have to, before I can do anything, I have to end the hearing.
That's why I ask.
second hearing on time. I appreciate that, though. Correct. Any information we have is helpful. Okay, seven...
When applying for a permit, for the accessory, is that given out to the applicant?
Ah, seven...
When they apply for the...
Sixteen?
When they come in to apply for a hearing.
Same thing.
They don't give them the conditions, because you guys choose which conditions you want
Two for definition of...
to put on there.
Oh, yeah.
Here, we're just...
Like somebody would...
I don't give them that when they apply.
But the definition of detached, that's what I want.
I gave it to them tonight, so they would know if it's gonna be on there if they had any objections to it.
Yeah.
I give it to them when they apply for the permit, you may choose not to put all
Three, two, two, one.
those conditions on there.
Three, two, two, one.
Some of those on there don't even apply.
Two for me, here we go.
But those aren't standard conditions, so they're bound by them anyways.
What's that?
If those are the standard conditions, they're bound by them anyways.
Yes.
So maybe it might not be a bad idea for Sheila, but if she's taking that occasion to hand that out to any applicant...
You don't have to do that. You don't have to do that. There's only a couple that when she does a decision, she'll leave off, like the agent on our veto on, they're not in the zone, she's gonna leave that off, but it's on there just in case they are on the zone.
And, sure, so just as we're taking care of maybe a piece of housekeeping, Caleb had pointed out, so the condition that I stepped through so feverishly, it is fully covered in our stated conditions, not only that it would meet 700, but it would actually be restricted to, because that one clearly outlines, so what I asked for in hindsight was not necessary. I'll make note of that, but I'll make note of that in the future.
Yeah, that's fine, and honestly, it doesn't really make much of a difference, I'm still gonna, because it was part of the hearing, we're gonna continue with that.
Completely understand, no, I agree, but it's a point taken for me, that I don't need to go there next time, because it's covered in the standard.
Still, there's nothing wrong with being thorough, and I do appreciate your interest in doing this.
It's okay in this situation.
Alright, good.
I'll have Sheila make up some all-ambulated copies of those, so you guys can have it in front of you.
That's great, yeah, I know, because it's coming really handy.
Okay, so we have at 7:15 now, so we can begin our next hearing, so I have, if I can find my green page, thank you, here we are. Okay, so we have a 7:15 applicant, Jacob and Karen Warren, requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws to allow for an existing two-family apartment, or two-family dwelling, excuse me, on property located at 4 Whitetail Run, Auburn, Mass., map 58, parcel 59, and we know the applicants are present. Could you please approach the lectern? Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So if you could just go over the like you heard the last hearing, talk a little bit about what you have going on, and why you came before us this evening?
Sure, so last week, we closed on the property at 4 Whitetail Run. We knew that the apartment, it was, the apartment, the unit was listed as coming with an apartment that had a tenant living there currently. The tenant was a senior citizen, so we asked if the tenant could stay in the unit when we purchased the apartment, when we purchased the property. During our discovery, we learned that the apartment was not permitted, so we made good friends with Sheila and figured out what it would take to put the apartment on the books to be able to keep our tenant there, and so that...
That's also when we discovered, oops, that's also when we discovered that the tax card listed it as a two-family, was when we were in the process of mortgage and purchasing. So we were surprised that the tax card said it was a two-family, but the apartment that makes it a two-family was not permitted.
Interesting.
Right, yeah.
So I have brought a copy of the tax card for review.
Could you present that, if you wouldn't mind, please, sir?
Sure.
Do you have copies of that?
I do have lots of copies.
Excellent, thank you.
It's the black one, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my gosh, of course, thank you.
Okay. So while we all have copies, would you just like to go over this with us, so we're all on the same pages, literally?
Sure, so on the first page of the tax card, on the lower left-hand corner, you see the use description as "two-family with water, zone RC." That is the first place that it lists "two-family" on the tax card. And then there's another, on the second page, in the middle, it's the section "mixed use", code 1043, "two-family water," 100%.
Okay.
And we know through conversation with the assessor's office, that this designation was added to the property in 2007.
It was added to the property in 2007, and when was the property constructed, do you know that by any chance?
It started construction in 1999, 94, sorry, 94.
1994. It was added in 2007, okay.
We don't know when, so we do know that the garage with the apartment was added at a later stage, we're not sure exactly when that construction took place.
Okay.
That work was permitted, and the original owners used that space initially as office space, and then we don't really know what happened, but at some point, there became a tenant, and who's the same person who's there now, and it was changed on the tax card. So we've been trying to piece nail this story together as well.
Okay, that's interesting. Certainly no fault of yours, I just find it interesting. Alright, do you have anything else to add before I open it to members of the board?
The inspector was there today, and I think we have made sure that the septic, there's also a memo that went into, like, the town file, that says, like, our septic accounts for that bedroom being there and that space being part of the house.
Right, so in other words, the septic would be adequate to manage both what we consider the apartment and the main dwelling?
Correct.
Right, okay, so are you on a well and septic, or town water, or how does that work?
Well and septic.
Well and septic, okay. Before we open it to members of the board, Caleb, could you give us any further insight on this piece of property?
From the town records, the garage was built somewhere around 1997. Our records show above the garage is unfinished space storage, we don't have any records on it ever being finished, so it's sometime the previous owner finished it, probably with no permits. Inspector visited today, a couple of minor issues that need to be taken care of, I don't have any problem if the board found that they wanted to approve it conditional upon those items being taken care of, I don't have any problem with that. One was adding a door, and I think turning, possibly changing a lock set on another door, and then a railing on an outside set of stairs, nothing major. Construction appears to be top quality, even though it wasn't inspected. We can't ensure that it's done right without inspecting it, but it's there, it's been there for some time.
Sure, okay. Okay, so, Mr. Chacolo, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yes, as a matter of procedural process, and Caleb, you would probably want to weigh in on this, this is, the application is for a two-family detached dwelling. The, and it's a special permit. It's not detached. It's not detached, and yet, I understand where you're going with it when you're referring to a bylaw, and if indeed, that's the bylaw we're going by, that would restrict this in square footage. It's, we're kind of, kind of an overlap, I think.
There's only one two-family definition in our bylaw, and they call it a two-family detached dwelling.
Right.
Detached from what? I don't know where that definition came from, but that's the only two-family we have. I don't think that it means the units are detached from each other, I don't know why it says detached dwelling.
Right, I'm thinking, and if I may add...
Absolutely.
So a two-family detached would mean separate dwelling areas in my mind, and I agree with you in terms of two-family detached being two separate buildings, I can appreciate that interpretation of the definition, but I think, because there was only one definition, I think it would, in my humble opinion anyway, mean that it would be separate living areas, because there are not two separate definitions in the bylaws, so I think if it's a fully enclosed dwelling, in my humble opinion, we could interpret it, and I know it's stretching, but as a, it's a separate dwelling, therefore, it's detached from the main residence, and we could possibly also advise the zoning board review committee of this situation, and they may be able to break off a separate definition for future use.
That, I think, would be a very good idea, because I think, in this particular case, there's an argument for, and then a got, an argument against using that definition, and I don't, especially in this particular case, I would not want this particular situation to fall under the heading that would be the square foot restriction, because they've been taxed as a two-family as it is, so that...
I see your point.
To fall under that 700 square foot restriction would be unfair.
If I may, if I may, through the chair?
Yes, please.
The definition of two-family detached dwelling in the bylaw is "two-family detached dwelling, a building containing two dwelling units, each of which has direct access to the outside or to a common hall."
Right, and that was my interpretation of the definition.
Pretty much every two-family in the history of...
So it's not necessarily two separate buildings, because then they would be freestanding buildings, it would be two buildings on the same property, but because it's detached, it's not, in other words, I can't walk through my kitchen into your living room.
Right, well, that, that's part of the definition to begin with, as long as that does not end up being restrictive in this particular situation.
Well, given the special permit, we could even agree to the square footage because of the construction, you know, I mean, rather than having them build walls and restrict the size of the apartment.
Okay, would we be safer, or would the applicant be safer, if we did refer it to the square footage? That's why I left it out in my original statement. Would it be safer if we did refer to that under a variance? Would it be, would it be the safer course?
If I may, through the chair, there's no restriction on the size of a two-family, either unit, there's no square footage restriction.
Accessory use apartment would have the 700 square...
Accessory use is separate from, yeah, that has a restriction, but the two-family does not, and I believe that's why they're applying for the two-family.
So we're not gonna run amok of that?
We don't really have to, no.
Okay. That was just my concern.
Right, okay, so my only other, I guess, I'm sorry, Mr. Maron?
No, that's okay, Mr. Chairman, finish your thought.
No, please, go ahead.
But I, thank you for being here. So, along the same lines, I did visit the property and took a look, and appreciate, and that's why I looked it up before the meeting, this is a, this is a two-family, and it's an existing apartment. I think that there was make mention of, and I think I referred to Mr. Chacolo, but I think we're talking of square footage of north of 1,000, maybe 1,200 square feet for that apartment.
It's 1,200.
It's 1,200 square feet, and it may actually have been when we visited, that you had given us that number, I'm not sure. And so, I, yeah, I, this, I don't, I don't know when this was flipped to a two-family in tax, but this is clearly a two-family. And for that, in viewing the property, given that it's been expected, I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Ms. Blaze, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, it clearly says in the application that they're looking for two-family structure. Just curious, is the tenant, is it like, somebody, a relative of yours, or of the previous owner, do you know, or...
It's a family friend of the former owner.
Okay.
And so, I'm not, like, I don't know the story, she's very pleasant, she's an 83-year-old woman, she has a cute boyfriend who takes her away on the weekends, so, like, she's lovely, and she wanted to stay, I guess, where she's been, but she's not any relation to ours at all.
So, and when she no longer lives there someday, do you plan on renting it out to somebody?
Yes, or our own parents, or my oldest is 15 years old, somebody who'll come back, who knows?
Congratulations, it's a beautiful house.
Thank you.
It is beautiful, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I'm good.
Okay, that was easy.
I know.
And I'm only asking because I feel as though I should, it has no bearing on this decision of the hearing, but Caleb, as the building inspector, are you self-satisfied with the means of entryway, just based on the fact that they have a somewhat of, I would respectfully say, elderly tenant?
Yeah, that's what one of the corrections was, they're gonna be adding a door and a wall for some more separation from a mudroom.
Okay.
They're putting in a railing, but it does have direct access to the outside, so we don't have any major concerns.
Okay. No further questions from me. Anyone else like to add anything, or did they thought of anything else?
I would just make a final comment, that this is absolutely, this bylaw is absolutely a candidate for the bylaw review committee, so that we can clean up that definition, but you know what, as clearly stated, you know, it's separated by a common hall, so this is clearly a two-family.
Okay, fantastic.
Just one comment, similar to what you made on the last time, we just want to thank people for coming forward and saying, "Hey, this is a..."
And it's an existing apartment. I think that there was make mention of, and I think I referred to Mr. Chacolo, but I think we're talking of square footage of north of 1,000, maybe 1,200 square feet for that apartment.
It's 1,200.
1,200 square feet.
It's 1,200 square feet. And it may actually have been when we visited that you had given us that number, I'm not sure. And so, I, yeah, I, this, I don't, I don't know when this was flipped to a two-family in tax, but this is clearly a two-family. And for that, in viewing the property, given it's been inspected, I don't have any further questions.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Ms. Blaze, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, it clearly says in the application that they're looking for two-family structure. Just curious, is the tenant, is it like somebody, a relative of yours, or of the previous owner, do you know?
It's a family friend of the former owner. And so, I'm not, like, I don't know the story. She's very pleasant, she's an 83-year-old woman, she has a cute boyfriend who takes her away on the weekends. She's lovely, and she wanted to stay, I guess, where she's been. But she's not any relation to ours at all.
So, and when she no longer lives there someday, do you plan on renting it out to somebody?
Yes, or our own parents, or my oldest is 15 years old, somebody will come back, who knows?
And congratulations, it's a beautiful house.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other questions.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
I'm good.
Okay, that was easy.
So like me, I know.
And I'm only asking because I feel as though I should, it has no bearing on this decision of the hearing, but Caleb, as the building inspector, are you yourself satisfied with the means of entryway, just based on the fact that they have a somewhat of, I would respectfully say, elderly tenant?
Yeah, that's what one of the corrections was. They're gonna be adding a door and a wall for some more separation from a mudroom.
Okay.
They're putting in a railing, but it does have direct access to the outside, so we don't have any major concerns.
Okay. No further questions from me. Anyone else like to add anything, or that they thought of anything else?
I would just make a final comment, that this is absolutely, this bylaw is absolutely a candidate for the bylaw review committee, so that we can clean up that definition. But you know what, as clearly stated, you know, it's separated by a common hall, so this is clearly a two-family.
Okay.
I just have to leave, we have a... Just one comment similar to what you made on the last time. We just want to thank people for coming forward and saying, hey, there's a apartment here that, yes, you've been paying for it, no one knows about it, you could have just let it go under the carpet, and you didn't. So we do appreciate that, we want to encourage people in town to come and get them on the books right, and get them, if we don't do this and correct them, then they go on forever, so.
And our biggest concern with these, I know this is a new purchase, so I know it's different, but our biggest concern is to make sure that these apartments are safe, first of all, that they're up to building code, the fire department is aware of them in the event they have to enter the dwelling. So we, again, try to make an effort and let people know that we're trying to work with them and get these apartments on the books, so we are aware of them. It's not necessarily an expense, or it's a point to make it difficult for them, we just want to be aware of them for the safety of everyone involved, so, again, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So, we bought this house eight days ago. Relocated four days ago. What is our timeframe? Because now, the railing is an easy repair, but we need to build a wall. So what is our timeframe that we have allotted to us to do that?
Caleb, do you want to answer that? So once the permit is issued, Caleb can clear that up for you.
So if I understand your question, you're asking how long you have to build the wall?
Yes, because there, the way that, I'm sorry, was it Rick was there today? The way he explained it, we just need to build a wall, basically, there's a hallway, we need to build a wall, which is fine with a door. But again, we are literally just moving, moving boxes still and organizing children. So is it, we need it next week? Is it 20 days? Is it a month? Like...
I think by the time the decision gets signed by the board, and then the appeal period, you're looking at probably 90 days, so I would want to see it done before then.
Before 90 days?
I think that's reasonable for everybody's involved, 90 days, get yourself settled, get things unpacked, and then at some point, make some, you know, opportunity to get that done.
That sounds lovely.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else you'd like to add?
No.
So do we have any abutters present? Would you like to approach the lectern and introduce yourself? I just need to have the folks at home hear you, that's all. That's the only microphone that they can do that.
Eric Cozeman, I live around the corner from them. I was just curious, I got a notice in the mail saying that somebody was applying for a two-family apartment at the Fort Whitetail Run. I know the former owner, my expectations were just what they said was happening, so I have no objections to what they're doing. I was just kind of curious, you know, why it wasn't settled already, so.
Well, I think that was the information you gathered in the hearing satisfactory?
Absolutely, it was fine, yeah. Everything went, you know, as expected. You know, when I got the notice in the mail, I was expecting to see, you know, a two-family go up back there, because they're currently constructing. But then I realized it was Paul Jim's former house, so.
Ah, okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
And I also appreciate you coming, because we have some interest from the abutters and, you know, positive input. That's kind of nice once in a while as well, so thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so do we have a motion on the 7:15 application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application under section 3.2.2.1 to allow a two-family detached dwelling at Fort Whitetail Run in Auburn, Massachusetts.
Second.
Second for Mr. Chacolo?
I think the only condition I would say is the regular standard conditions, and they comply with any work to get the building inspector satisfied.
I would agree, so basically the same restrictions we had on the previous hearing would apply in this case as well.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chacolo, do you have, well, you already seconded that. Mr. Maron, can I have your vote, please, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Blaze, thank you. Ms. Roach?
Yes.
And Mr. Tatro says yes, so congratulations. You'll be able to see Caleb for the permit, as you heard from the previous hearing. You have about 90 days to complete everything, and good luck. I hope you enjoy your new residence, and I hope you have
Be a blast.
an easy time unpacking all those boxes, so.
Welcome to Auburn.
Thank you.
Good luck, thank you.
All right, so you have some decisions to attend to, you have some decisions to sign from the previous hearing that I was not here. Everyone but myself, yes. Ross, sir?
It's the quickest signature on the land.
Oh, it can be quicker.
You won't read it. Oh, mine is just like a swivel, so I don't even like do, I just do an M. I signed it my way.
I understood that we weren't gonna have to do 10 separate decisions for that property. But they were done for each law. But extremely well done. I mean, that, outside writing the decisions and the way in which we're doing it now is so much easier.
I'd rather have my...
And consistent, for sure.
Thank you.
Trade you?
Trade.
Oh, imagine, they just keep coming.
Last one on its way.
Keep signing, you need so many times. Freaky as a stamp. The last one doesn't look like the first one.
So while we're signing these decisions, I just wanted to remind the folks at home that we do have an active board right now called the Zoning Board Review Committee, and there is, I believe, two seats open for volunteers, so if anyone's interested, they want to contact the town hall and ask about the vacancies on the zoning board review committee. We'd appreciate some input from the community regarding the review and possible update of certain zoning bylaws. So thank you for that. That's for Mr. Maron. That's three, actually.
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't sign that one?
Good to know I was standing up.
Thank you.
And I didn't sign this one. Is it the rock stuff? Yeah. This is missing a staple. This is missing a thing.
Ooh, a...
You're gonna sign that.
Saber club?
Yeah, I don't know where it ended up.
That's what we'll do. Improvise.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Is it a particular case?
Snackers.
Did we miss one again?
Here.
She's got it, she's on it. It's just the boys.
Right, okay. There you are. Come on, one more, each. Thank you for checking all those, Ms. Blaze.
Good work. Thank you.
Okay, administrative responsibilities, I believe, are complete for this evening? Is that correct?
Do we need to approve minutes?
Okay, so we have the motion, we have minutes to approve, the April 20th and May 18th. Motion to approve the minutes as entered?
Sure.
Motion approved as entered?
Do we have a second?
Sure, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next meeting will be July 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM, at the same location. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.